School's school board organizational meeting. Today is Thursday, January 4th, 2024. It is 5:30 PM and we are in the central building, second floor conference room. And we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to begin tonight with welcoming returning board members. For those watching at home, my name is Julie Anderson and I am the acting chair for the beginning of this organizational meeting. Also today, we have returning board members Alyssa Bowers, Theron Kruger, Charlie Prieb, Adida Mansfield, and Dave Dunn. Grant Sheffert is not able to be with us tonight. And then, of course, we have our superintendent Eric Hutzspeth and our director of business services, Matt Mullins. All right, so let's begin tonight with a motion to approve tonight's agenda. I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
I think Adida got you first.
Yeah.
First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Then we'll continue with our organization of school board. I just wanted to acknowledge school board policies 202, which is school board officers and also 209, which is the school board code of ethics. I will explain kind of the process for election of officers, which is our next item on the agenda. So the duties of officers and those positions are described in policy 202. Nomination nominations and votes are part of the open meeting and a secret vote is not allowed. The acting chair asks for nominations. Any board member may nominate any other board member and nominations do not require a second. Self-nominations are allowed. Board members may choose to accept or decline a nomination. If no other nominations are immediately received, the acting chair should pause and repeat the call for nominations. The acting chair should again pause and repeat the call for nominations a third time to ensure that any board member wishing to nominate has ample opportunity to do so. After the third call for nominations, if no other nominations are forthcoming, the acting chair should close the nominations for the office. A motion to reopen nominations may be adopted on a majority vote. If only one board member is nominated, the chair can declare that candidate elected by acclamation. If two or more members are nominated for an office, we will conduct a vote by a show of hands for each candidate. Candidates may make a short statement about their suitability for the officer position to which they are nominated. The candidate with the majority of votes will be elected. Does that all make sense? Awesome. All right, so we'll begin then with the office of chair. The chair presides at all meetings of the school board, countersigns all orders upon the treasurer for claims allowed by the school board, represents the school board in all actions and performs all duty a chair usually performs. The chair also meets with the superintendent to set the meeting agenda. So nominations are now in order for the office of chair.
I nominate Dave Dunn.
All right, Dave Dunn has been nominated. Do you accept this nomination?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any further nominations for the office of chair? Are there any further nominations for the office of chair? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of chair are closed. As Dave Dunn is the only candidate nominated for the office of chair, I hereby declare him elected by acclamation and direct that this be recorded in the minutes. So Dave and I will now switch seats and I will turn this meeting over to Dave.
Don't forget your name, Derek.
We'll just pretend.
Lot different sitting here. All right, thank you. The next election of an officer will be the vice chair. So we will now entertain nominations for the office of the vice chair.
I nominate Adida Mansfield for vice chair.
Okay, Adida Mansfield's been nominated. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you do. Okay, are there any other nominations for vice chair? Any other nominations for vice chair? Any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none. I gotta find the correct wording here. Since Adida Mansfield is the only candidate nominated for the office of vice chair, I hereby declare him, her, excuse me, her, elected by acclamation and direct that this be recorded in the minutes. Congratulations. Moving on, we need to elect a clerk, office of the clerk.
You have to ask for nominations. You have to ask for nominations first.
Oh, oh, yes. Nominations for the office of the clerk.
I would nominate myself for office clerk.
Okay. Julie Anderson nominates herself for the office of the board clerk. Do you, okay. And do you accept that nomination from yourself?
Yes.
Okay, she accepts it. Are there any other nominations for the office of the clerk? Any other nominations for the office of the clerk? Any other nominations for the office of the clerk? Since Julie will close the nominations and since Julie Anderson is the only candidate nominated for the office of the clerk, I hereby declare her elected by acclamation and direct that to be recorded in the minutes. Congratulations. Finally, we need to elect a treasurer. I do have a, an email from Grant Sheffert, who could not be with us tonight. And he just said, and I'll read from his email, "For officer elections, I am interested in continuing to be the treasurer." So can we take that as he's nominating himself?
I can nominate Grant Sheffert to be a treasurer for 2024.
Okay. All right. Any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? Since Grant Sheffert is the only candidate nominated for the office of treasurer, I hereby declare him elected by acclamation and direct that this be recorded in the minutes. All right, thank you. Item C, establish meeting dates, time and location for 2024. You should have a tentative schedule there. Okay, yeah. You have one?
No.
No?
It's just up there. Yeah, it's up, it's on the board.
No, I'm gonna go off this one. Okay. So.
Can I just make, can I just make a few notes on there? So the committee, actual dates and assignments will be established once the committees are made by the committee. We know that, for example, the DAC meeting will be meeting more frequently than they have in the past. We know finance and facilities have some, some heavy meetings coming up in the next few months, which are things we're working on. Also to note for the board to discuss, so the fourth of, the July work session would have fallen on the actual fourth this year. And so in the effort to avoid the Fourth of July, we go to the next week, which then is the fair this next year, which we have traditionally attempted to, to avoid if we possibly could.
Avoid meeting, not the fair.
Avoid, avoid meeting. We want to be at the fair, avoid a meeting.
Yes.
Right. So we have at times not done a July work session in lieu of just this, it's the summertime, not as many things are going on. It's an okay time not to have a July work session on the formal schedule and then call one if needed. It'd be sometime between June 20th and July 18th. We need to get together as a board. We potentially call a work session if we had to. Or we can leave it on there per the calendar. And we also could then in May or June opt to cancel that meeting. So you have some options as a board. But as you approve that, this schedule tonight, that would be probably the, other than that, start of the school year, MEA, that all flowed pretty nicely as far as moving the schedule.
Okay, and I have, when I was looking at it before tonight's meeting, September the 21st is actually a Saturday, I believe. So it should be the 19th.
So the fifth should be the day of the 19th. Yep, that's a two, good, good catch. Yep.
Okay. All right.
I, I'm okay leaving it as presented and we could cancel it just in case we, or, or taking it off completely. Like either way, it doesn't really matter to me. But do you guys have thoughts on just taking it off or?
It don't matter either way. I think if it's on there, you kind of feel for it, but then you can always remove it. It's easier to do that than to plan for it and not having it on there, right?
Well, as far as notification of the public, as far as getting all seven of your schedules together, it might be better to leave it on now and then take it off.
Right, okay.
Than do it that way.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Comments? Someone like to make a motion to approve the schedule as presented?
Motion to approve the schedule as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the meeting schedule as presented. Any more discussion?
Do you want to modify it, just that one date? With the September date being modified?
With the modification, yes.
Okay, okay, with that one modification.
September 19th.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Item D, designate board representatives for school business committees. And what I did yesterday was I threw, find it. I threw everybody's name into a hat and drew them out. So I have a, a schedule of taking turns here. And it just so happened that Grant, who was not here, his name was drawn first. He said, for committee assignments, here are my preferences. Finance committee, district accountability advisory committee. Since he's the treasurer, he would be on the finance committee. And then he has second, three second choices and three third choices. So. Any suggestions how we should? Julie, do you have any?
Well, it depends on how many you want us to like declare. I mean, did you want everyone to like pick three or four?
Right.
Okay, or?
Three?
I would say if you start with three.
Start with three?
His first choice or his two second choices, that way.
His, his first choices were finance and DAC. And then, and then his first second choice was the professional growth and development committee. So. Right, that's how he listed it, so.
Yeah, he's, and he's on the.
So he'll, he'll have like seven committees.
Right.
Just see this list.
So if everyone just begins with three, then Grant's three that he's beginning with is finance, DAC and PG&E. And then we can all go back and pick another one or do another round or something.
Okay, what was the third one again, please?
The professional growth and development.
Okay.
Yeah.
And can I just make one, sorry, one more note there? If negotiations changes, I think we talked about with the current negotiations committee is the current group continuing, which are the teachers. I think it would make sense for cohesiveness. We've already met four or five times for that negotiations committee to finish through the teachers group. But then if the negotiations committee is different after this evening, that group would then pick up with the subsequent groups, that would pick going through.
So we can, we can have two negotiations committees. We can have a continuing group.
Yeah, for a very brief time.
And then we can have a new group, so.
Particularly because we know that negotiations will be a very busy group the next three months, as will a few other committees as well. So I think that through. As you think about your own time commitments, how much you want to spend with me?
Okay, the next name is Adida.
Oh, I would like to stay with negotiations. Then. Policies. And I would like to get the personnel committee if I can.
And what was the last one, please?
The personnel, district personnel.
Personnel, yeah.
Okay. All right. And the third name is Julie.
All right. I would pick facilities. And I would like to stay with negotiations as well. And then. I think I'll say legislative. So facilities, negotiations and legislative.
Okay, facilities, negotiations and legislative.
Yep.
Okay. Charlie?
I'm next, huh? Okay. Well, I'd like, I'd, I'd like to stay on the negotiations, okay?
Okay.
It really, it really doesn't, it really doesn't make any difference to me. I wouldn't mind being on facilities, but if somebody else wants to be on that, that's fine. But I wouldn't mind being on facilities.
Well. We'll put you down at for now and then we'll see.
Okay.
See how it shakes out.
I'll see. I can, I can stay, I can stay on arena board also. I'll stay.
Which one?
The arena board.
Arena, okay. Okay, negotiations, possibly facilities and the arena board. Okay, Theron?
I'll stick with policy, facilities. And I don't, I'll, I'll probably stay on that district accountability. Or sorry, no, I wanted to go which, the insurance and safety is the one I wanted.
Okay. Okay, you would like policy, possibly facilities, insurance and safety to start with.
Yep, those three is what I'd like, yeah.
Okay. Then it's my turn. I would like to stay on personnel. And I would like to stay on finance. And how about superintendent evaluation?
That's a pretty time-consuming committee, Dave.
Okay, and Alyssa?
I will stay on finance. The community ed advisory, I'll stay on that one. And then I'll stay on the insurance and safety for my first three.
Show that we have nine spots left, is that right?
Twelve, fifteen, there's magnitude sixteen, eighteen. Everyone's got three and we have.
Nine open spots.
So we have negotiations accounted for with three and nobody else, like, we're not trying to trim it down. We've got finance, which is now spoken for, facilities, which is good to go, professional growth and development, arena board, community advisory. We'll need two more spots for legislative. One more on insurance and safety. One more on policy. Two on supie eval. Two on DAC and one for personnel. Good nine. So if everyone goes with a fourth committee, then we'll see where it goes from there.
Okay, so can we leave four on facilities for right now?
No, we don't have four.
We only have three.
We only have three on there.
We're good.
Yeah, there's only three on facilities.
Okay, didn't you?
I, I, it's, right now, the facilities is Julie, Charlie and Theron. I, Grant had professional growth and development first. If that's what you're thinking.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, we're good. So.
Do you want to go back to the top of the list again?
Yeah, should we just go around again and maybe everybody try to pick one?
Well, his next one was facilities, but, and then it was personnel. So they're all second choices. So there's still an open spot for personnel. So I would just put Grant in personnel, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Adida, do you have another?
Maybe insurance and safety.
Okay, insurance and safety. Julie?
I would pick the DAC committee.
DAC, she said.
Oh, sorry, DAC, yeah.
All right. Charlie?
I can, I can stay on policies. There's a room on policy for me.
Okay. Theron?
So the. How often does your superintendent one or the legislative meet?
Legislative meets maybe three or four times a year and then as needed. Superintendent eval is probably every other month.
I'll go with the legislative.
Okay. Obviously, that's a little bit more time during legislative session.
What is it?
Yeah, but, but.
But it's not like significant.
Not more than like once a month at the most.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is, this is the off year too. There won't be a big session this year.
Okay.
It's typically quarterly.
So no more than the DAC was, really?
No, no more than the DAC was, less than the DAC will be.
Yeah, because the DAC is actually going monthly now?
Every other month.
Every other month?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So how many do we have on DAC right now?
Two.
There's two there.
We have two there.
Okay, I'll go on that then. Or I'll stay on that, I should say. And Alyssa?
I will stay on the superintendent eval.
So then by my count, we just have one opening on legislative and one opening on superintendent eval. That somebody, if somebody wanted to pick those up or we go with.
You have one on superintendent?
Yeah.
One opening.
One opening.
One opening, one opening. Yeah, we have two on, on those, both those committees.
I can do superintendent if.
Superintendent Stephen. I mean, otherwise I could too.
Okay, it's that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Adida, on which one?
The superintendent eval, okay.
So we good then?
Just one on, if anyone else wants to join legislative.
How many is Grant on right now?
Grant is on four.
He is on four?
I'll do legislative again.
Okay.
Okay.
One open, I'll do that one again then.
So I have us all accounted for.
Good. Okay, just a minute here.
And next week's committees, which would be policy and finance, looks like the same, the same roster on those two committees. So between tomorrow and Monday, we'll get all the invites changed going forward after that. But policy and finance, those should already be on your calendar then because it's the same folks.
Right. So we don't have to approve this then, do we? Officially approve it? It says designate. We do?
Yeah. So just, yeah, just call for it.
Okay, so when someone like make, make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve our board representatives for school business committees as we've discussed.
Okay. Motion?
Theron seconded.
I seconded.
Second, okay. Any more discussion, comments? All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Item E, designate official newspaper. It looks like, at least to start with, we have two choices. We've got the Wasika County News and we've got the Wasika County Pioneer.
That's correct. And we, we accepted bids for both, from both those newspapers here in December. And it took me until yesterday to answer one of my questions about, because they, they submitted them in different formats. So we found that out. But essentially what it comes down to is there's two things of note here for the board to consider. One is that last year, we also had similar bids from both newspapers, chose to stay with the Wasika County News, primarily just from the discussion of the Pioneer becoming a newer, newer, a newer newspaper and seeing what their, what their user or their readership was going to be, was still growing. And costs were, that time, I think the Pioneer was more expensive than the, than the County News. Right now, we have the opposite. We have a bid from Wasika County News for $3.75 per standard advertising unit. But so I had to find out what a standard advertising unit was, whatever that means. And that is one and a half inches by one inch. And the Wasika County Pioneer has a cost of $1 per, for an inch, one inch by two inches. So the county, Pioneer is actually proposing us a pretty significantly less expensive option as well as their readership is, has grown significantly in the community of Wasika. And I would say that both, both newspapers have covered us fairly and appropriately. I would, I would think that it continues to be a, we're supportive of both organizations. As a school board though, as you continue to support both entities in our local community, the cost factor alone is probably a reason to consider, given the Pioneer a year, to go through that process and then seeing where it goes to the next year after that would be my, my thoughts as superintendent. And then the board can go where they have to go.
Well, I'm gonna abstain from the vote because my wife does some writing for the Pioneer. But I would like to see them get a chance to do it for a year. And then we can decide next year if we want to go back to the County News or stay with Pioneer, we can decide that next year. That would be my suggestion, I guess.
How much should we typically spend a year with either one?
It's about a few hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's, it's not significant.
Not very expensive. This, this really comes down to when we have to advertise, like the budget publications, the, we have an official notice of an auction, something like that. It's not significant dollars. It's more of just the, the required statute to have a, an official legal newspaper. But most of what they print for us is actually them covering stories of us.
Fill the pages.
And they both, they both publish a monthly column for us and they're both supportive entities.
I'd like to continue to support both. I mean, I can see, it'd be nice to kind of go back, back and forth or every couple of years, switch or whatever. But I, I think one of our issues last year with the Pioneer, our concerns last year was they didn't really have an online presence, whereas the County News did. But I think that that's changed a lot in the last year. So if they're. So they're, they're pretty equal options for us. Well, except that one is significantly cheaper, so, yeah.
I'm okay with Pioneer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, like you said, they both do a great job, but maybe go with Pioneer this year and reevaluate next year.
Well, we need to do.
A motion.
Yeah, but we need to get rates every year.
So somebody like to make motion?
I can make a motion to designate official newspapers for our district. It will be Wasika County Pioneer newspaper.
Okay. Second?
I'll second that.
Yes, we have a motion and a second to make the Wasika County Pioneer our official newspaper for 2024. Any more discussion?
Is this, is this?
Yep.
January to December or school year?
January to December. So we'll reorganize it next January again.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Okay. Hearing no more discussion or comments. And again, I'm going to abstain from the vote. All those in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Well, one abstention. All right, next item, item F, designate depositories. And. May I find that? And all of this. Okay, presently, the arrangement for our depositories are Rios, Keen Bank, payroll and trust fund scholarship money. Midwest Bank, all dispersments except payroll. And the, what does all that stand for? Minnesota.
Mizlaaf is how you.
Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund.
Okay. Dispersments regarding building slash facility projects, building bond facilities projects. Keen, Midwest Bank, United Prairie Bank, Wells Fargo Bank, and MSD Liquid Assets Fund, all may bid on investments. The administration is recommending that the board designate the Keen, Midwest, United Prairie Bank, Wells Fargo Bank, and MSD Liquid Assets Fund as official depositories for the calendar year 2024.
I'll make a motion that we designate the banks as you just listed.
Okay, a motion that we.
I'm going to abstain from this vote. Okay. As an employee, makes sense.
Okay, second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on this item. And we're going to have one abstention, so any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous with one abstention. Moving on to the next item. Item G, designate school attorney. Recommendation, move to designate Patton, Horveston, and Berg, Mr. William Horveston, as school attorney for the calendar year 2024. The district reserves the right to consult with other attorneys for specialty reasons, for example, special education.
Is this our current attorney? Okay, so just continuing as is?
It is, yes. And really, we, districts, districts designate an attorney as basically their blanket representation, should someone want to contact us. But typically, then we'd reach out to a specific attorney for if we have employee issues or if we have special education issues, things with that as well. But the, the firm of Patton, Horveston, and Berg has been really good for us here locally.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to designate Patton, Horveston, and Berg as our school attorney for the calendar year 2024.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to designate our school attorney for 2024. Any more discussion or comments?
Do we need an amendment on there that says the district reserved the right to consult with other attorneys? Do we need that amendment on?
Not on the motion.
Okay.
This is more informational that, for the board, that we might have to use another attorney for special cases.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Item H, establish board member per diem and other allowance. The rate in 2022 to 2023 was $100 per meeting for directors, 125 per meeting for the vice chair, the treasurer, clerk, $150 per meeting for the chair, chairperson, and $50 per meeting. School board members were also given a family activity pass. And I'm going to make a suggestion that we raise all of those up $5. So it would be, I guess, what I'd like you to consider is it would be from 50 to 55, 100 to 105, 125 to 130, and 150 to 155. I know there has not been, school board members have not, I know we're not here to get rich. And as I said today, I think some of us, maybe all of us, I don't know, would, would do this even if we got paid nothing or little because of, this is what we want to do. But at the same time, I think our, our time and our energy is worth something. And we regularly give raises as best we can to our employees. And I don't think we should be kind of forgotten about. So that would be my suggestion. So open it up to discussion.
I would not agree. I think that the current situation, economic situation, and regarding people in Wasika, I think we should keep the way that we are, our time and allowances.
I agree with your thought process, Dave, but I think I, I'm with Adita where, I mean, $5 to any one of us. You know, I, I, I know where you're coming from. Like, I feel like that should, like that may, should be, should be written in. But for $5 for each of us per meeting, that might just put a sour taste in people's mouths.
That's what I'm thinking, you know? It's not too much, but people will not like it. That's how I look at it.
Well, I know that Eric did a little research before the meeting and we're, we're right in the middle of what other school board members receive for their services. I don't know what better way to put it, but I'm okay either way. We haven't, my time on the board, we haven't changed. This has been, this has been the rates the whole time.
Long time.
No, we're not in to make money. No one has suggested a raise either, so I appreciate just having the suggestion. But I'm okay with leaving it too, so, yeah.
I do think that one thing the board could consider, and we talked about this probably two or three years ago and haven't since then, is, you know, there are districts that put superintendent compensation as one of their, I'm sorry, superintendent, uh, school board compensation as part, one of their policies. So it's one of the policies in the school board series. So as the policy committee reviews that through, every third year, then you're looking and researching and gathering what others, other school boards are doing. I, I try to do as much research as I can in December in preparation for this conversation. But it always feels a little bit like we're trying to decide right here at the table without knowing what's going, without really having all that background for all of us. So one thing we could do, to, to your point, Dave, is we could ask the policy committee to, as they're working through this, please review, should we be adding that as a policy? And then, then it doesn't become a, are we deciding every year, just kind of here at the table, if a certain dollar amount is valuable? Or in that case, the policy committee can really say, we've researched it. We've looked at what our regional districts are doing. We're behind here or we're not. And then it doesn't feel like a, then it doesn't as much, to your point, Adita, I think it's a perception of what's going on in the district and the community, more so than dollars. And if you do that in the policy committee, perhaps you don't have that dynamic quite as impactful and actually can really be about, is the compensation fair and equitable? That's just an idea.
Okay.
I, I would agree with Eric. I'd, I'd like it as a committee to bring it to the table every year, not just one person feeling like it's on their shoulders to bring it. You know, if that makes sense.
And then that committee can do that legwork to see where Wasika lands in relation to other districts. But yeah, then at least it's talked about every year.
And, and then it doesn't get to be five, six years and we haven't done anything about it because the policy committee is going to be bringing it up regularly. And it's on a rotation then.
I think it'd be really interesting for the policy committee to see the, every single board, school board, compensates differently. So I, I, if, I, I mean, a couple of years ago, I, I did my own little research and it's really hard to compare because it's all so different. Some just get like an annual stipend, some gets, you know, like per meeting like what we do. Some, it's, it's so different. And so it's, it, it would be a really good exercise for more of a committee setting than seven of us sitting around the table on this day. But it'd have that more in-depth conversation versus us sitting around asking if we want to give, give us a nominal raise or not. So, yeah.
Okay, so as a kind of, well, a couple of things. One, part of the reason I brought it up was to have some discussion about it. And way back when, when I was on the school board before, this is exactly the same thing that would come about. We'd have a little discussion and the board was reluctant to raise their own salaries and so we would let it go. I experienced that for nine years. And I was part of that, so I'm not criticizing that because I was a part of that. And now that I'm on the board for the second time, I kind of see the same thing happening all over again for the same reasons. And I'm a part of that too, so I'm not being critical. I just wanted to have some discussion about this. And, you know, if it's the consensus of the group, we send this back to the policy committee and let them work on it. That's fine with me. I'm okay with that.
Well, as we, and as we said, we, we visited this briefly earlier today about this. And like I mentioned, it's, then it becomes part of what's going on in the community, the dynamic.
That's perfectly fine.
Rarely is it ever the right time, because when you consider those factors, right?
Okay.
So we should take a motion though to approve what's proposed here tonight?
Just leave it the way it is.
Whatever, whatever, whoever the motion is.
Okay.
And how can you get that in the policy committee then, for them to review?
Well, we'll just.
Okay.
Bring it up. Then direct it.
Okay, but somebody like to make a motion then that we approve what's been suggested, which is the same as what it has been?
I'll make a motion to approve the continuance of the 2022, 2023 rates.
Okay, thank you.
A second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the per diem and other allowances as presented. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Item I, establish payment of claim schedule for 2024.
So this, I just want to make a comment. This was, we knew last year that we did this three-month rotation. I liked it. I don't know, I mean, obviously, it was only a few of us that did it last year, but would, yeah. I, I liked doing it that way, I guess.
I didn't know any different, but I, I will say it was nice because then you were able to look at three months consecutively and see, you know, what you can expect every month.
Yeah.
Not that you can't go look at it otherwise, but, you know, it forced you in there to look at those things and see what was the same and what was different and question different things. So I, I liked it.
Okay. Matt, do you have any comments about?
No, everybody that came through had, you know, not many, but very good questions. And, you know, it always helps to have someone, you know, poking a little bit so that you feel like, you know, you're not just doing your thing on your own, so.
Well, it is one of the district checks and balances to do this, so.
Yeah.
That answer every year for the audit person.
Okay, somebody like to make a motion to approve the, this schedule then for this coming year?
I'll make a motion to approve the schedule for the payment of claims.
Okay. Okay, first and a second to approve the 2024 payment of claim schedule. Any more comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Open forum. Nobody's here. Informational items, superintendent report.
Yeah, I just have just a few brief updates this evening, just as we get back into 2024. Had a nice restful break hopefully for everyone, the, the way the holidays felt. We were able to have a couple, couple days of holiday for the district there in two consecutive weeks, which was nice for people to get recharged and get themselves kind of heading into 2024. Our enrollment heading, coming, coming out of the break, just checking it briefly today. We didn't lose significant students over the break, so that's a positive thing. We had that going for us, we found them all and brought them back, so that's good. We did have some stomach bugs and some, and some influenza-type illnesses going on late in December. Nothing that was at a level that was of concern or reporting anything. You know, there's a certain level of students you have to report to MDH if you have illnesses that are the same. And didn't have any of that, so that was real positive in the sense of, it's been one of those damp, cool, but not really cold type winters. So I think some of those, I can even hear it in my own voice, some of those illnesses are just nagging, those colds. But nothing significant to impact our operations, which has been positive. January is a busy month in the district offices. We met today with our payroll and HR to get contract updates beginning to be implemented. You know, we settled, we had those three contracts that were ratified here in December for custodians, food service, and paras. And now our district office team will be working hard to get those, those changes implemented. W2s are a big project here for January, as well as just all the year-end updating. Our audit book did get officially sent out last week. So we'll get that to the finance committee here next week, as well as a digital copy to all of you prior to that official approval here in later this month. Nothing that's changed based on our last report, but just the official, now it's done, is how that looks. Kind of some exciting news, I have a chance to meet with Audra Veroven from Palmer Bus tomorrow morning to show me the new app that they are ready to start implementing here shortly, that parents will be able to sign up for to be able to better track bus routes and bus timing and delays and changes. And I haven't seen it yet, so I'm looking forward to seeing what that implementation should look like. So hopefully, we can get that implemented as well. I believe Lens is also going to be doing something along those lines, or sharing the same app. I, I'm waiting to hear from Audra tomorrow morning, but that'll be a positive thing for us to have. I, I would have loved to say in October it was done before the snow fly, flew, right? I didn't think it would be January and wouldn't have snow on the ground yet. But that should be a positive thing for families to be able to help understand those bus routes a little bit more real-time, active for that. So looking forward to getting rolling again, you know? It's been a, you know, positive first few days, a short week, a lot of, a lot of yawns as routines come back into, to normal. But the, our schedule is, is a good one in the next few months that we have some, some Mondays that are holidays and different days like that. So we'll, we'll get into the end of this, end of the second trimester before we know it.
Are we, are we going to have a finance committee meeting next Thursday?
It's on the calendar and we'll, it's on my radar to discuss with the finance committee how we want to do that with MSBA.
Okay.
Remember, last year, we did it virtually for some folks. Some people were there, some people were on Zoom or Google. We'll, we'll talk through that.
Okay.
As well.
All righty. All right, no other action items, upcoming events or reminders. Next regular meeting is Thursday, January the 18th. The MSBA Annual Leadership Conference is next week, Wednesday through Friday.
Who all is going? Who all is going to the conference?
I was just gonna ask that. Okay, are you planning on going?
I'll be there Thursday, Friday.
I'm not sure, I need to look at my calendar, busy work schedule.
Okay, Charlie? Nope, you're gonna be gone.
I'm gonna do next week.
You're working.
Yep.
Working?
Well, I was going to be there, but I had something come up on my work schedule that I can't get out of. So I will not be there.
Okay, okay. And I know Grant's gonna go, because he's gonna drive me.
We are going, Dave.
All right, and Monday, January 15th is the Districtwide Professional Development Day. No school for students, but the teachers will be at school. So anything else from anybody? It's a whole different world sitting in this chair, let me tell you. But hopefully it'll be good. All right, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.